I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes have been tabled till next time. Now we have payroll, the amount of 172,839.30. You know, if you had a chance to look it over or not, Bruce, probably not being up all night.
As you said, it was pretty normal, so I make a motion, we approve payroll, the amount of 172,839.30.
Oh, in favor, say aye. Or I second that. Better second it, first Jim's not here. Yeah, I'll second that. All in favor, aye. Yeah, we need to acknowledge your receipt of the payroll claims in the amount of 144,193.67.
Make a motion, we acknowledge received payroll claims, accounts payable report, amount of 144,193.67.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
I'll make a motion, approve claims, the amount of 293,64.44.
And I'll second that. So there's no hand type checks. We didn't do anything with that, correct?
That's just a requirement by statute, right? The 100R has to be advertised, or not advertised, but in gateway, so.
Just notification. Now we're ready for the amendment. The property we sold in Diamond, it was, had the wrong resolution number, it was 27, and it will currently change to 31 because 27 had already been.
I'll make a motion that, we've already approved the resolution, but I'll just make a motion that we change the resolution number to number 31.
And I'll second that.
For official records.
You want this signed, or?
I don't know that it has to be signed.
You might just initial next to it and.
Just initial this because this is.
That's the original?
Yeah.
Initial next to the change at the top and leave it.
There we are. Guess we really don't know or do anything about this claim, correct? Just to let us know that.
There was a slip and fall.
There was a, yeah, at the jail, and claimed against us.
They had said a red and claimed by the inmate, they got asked along with the insurance, so.
Okay, we have an appointment for the tax board for the assessor. Okay, Lori Brown, James St. Clair, and Mike Strack.
I'm not even sure, do you guys know, are these the same ones that are currently on the board?
I have no idea.
I don't know either.
You don't know if any exchanged?
I'm pretty sure Strack is, I don't know about the other two.
Yeah, Strack was appointed last year.
I want to say these are all on the board right now. I know St. Clair is, and I'm pretty sure Strack is. I'm not sure about Lori, but I.
I honestly can't say.
I think they're all currently serving as, on the Tax Board of Appeals, so.
I don't, she's the one who has to work with them, I don't have a problem with.
If that's who Katie wants, I have no problem, so.
It's the way I look at it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointments that Katie Potter, the assessor, has recommended for the Tax Board of Appeals. That's Lori Brown, Jim St. Clair, and Mike Strack.
And I'll second that. Okay, now, Town of Marshall and the Town of Rockville, and you're saying that is nothing more than a quick claim deed, or a deed to be made for the properties?
Those are some of the properties that sold at tax sale, that the commissioner, or commissioner sale, I guess I should use the right term. The county had acquired through tax sale, they didn't sell tax sales, so the commissioners received them on behalf of the county, and they were assigned to the Town of Marshall, the Town of Rockville by the county. So we've already given our blessing by assigning it to them, they're just now trying to make it so they can sell the property. So they have to do a petition, the quiet title would be able to sell the property. And that's what those are, is copies and their petition.
So all we're doing is just acknowledging that.
Yeah, it's just for informational purposes, because assuming the county has no objection to them acquiring titles since we decided. They're required to give notice to anybody that's had a property interest in the past, basically.
Okay, the January 26th is when the bids will be open for the properties listed for the sale of property.
Yeah, these, these properties will be taking bids, because I'm on the redevelopment commission, will be taking the bids on these, January 26th, our next meeting, see if any of these can get off the tax sale list.
Get back on that.
Bid sale, off the regular tax sale.
All right. And we have the clerk's monthly report. Do you have any other new business, Bruce? Do you have any other new business?
I don't have any other thing that I know of at this point.
All right. Old business, I guess Julie will not be here.
She's not here, yeah. She sent a report in, but.
122 responses in December, 114 patient transporters. Staying pretty busy. Was he needing anything? Is he still at his office? I don't know if he even.
He doesn't need anything.
All right. Scratch Chris, and we're ready for Justin. You're needing a new contract signed, no?
Yeah, I don't know if you want to do that first, or?
It don't matter, whichever you prefer.
You'd probably like to get that out of the way, go with it, get paid or not, right?
They don't say, probably, right? Yeah. And it's the same as it's been for all the previous years, my term, and whatever, 72 years or 20 years, it's still set at 85,000, that's in lieu of taking any statute before it'd be used on the title too. So nothing's changed.
Just for clarification, just so people understand, sheriff has by statute, like, three different ways they could be paid, and Justin has, and the county has agreed to do it by what they call a salary contract. So what we're signing here is the salary contract for Justin's pay for next year. And so I make a motion that we agree and sign the compensation agreement with Sheriff Cole on the contract that he has presented to us.
And I'll second that. Where I need to sign this, Nick, it does have president, you just want me to mark it first, vice?
I have the vice, yeah.
I don't know if you want me to hang on to that and present it to the council, or?
There's, you want me to go ahead and sign my part though, don't you? There's place here for the council to sign.
If you want me to take it to them, or if you want the others off, just take it to them?
That's entirely up to you and them.
I figure I just hold on to it, Justin, I'm gonna take it next week.
All right, thank you.
And I will second that, if I second, there's no place else, just.
Okay.
Know if you need any more of it, or?
Okay, thank you. The current inmate count's 46, six of those, or I'm sorry, five of those are Department of Corrections inmates that are COVID protocols back in place when the numbers went high again recently. The December uniform crime report is attached in there, it's just kind of monthly total to what we do, believe through the other agencies that are in Park County, so Rosedale, Monzoo, Rockville, these departments are in. The report of collections is attached, which includes firearms permit fees, sex offender fees, sheriff self fees. The December inmate bill and what we billed last year for Department of Corrections or other counties was 13,275. And for the year total for last year, there was 60,757 meals served in the jail, so that's three meals a day per inmate. Currently, we have four employees with COVID, that's mainly dispatchers and jail officers, different shifts, one is the same family that everybody else has believed that contracted through outside means and not through work, and zero current inmates have it, so haven't had a case heard yet.
Good.
I think that that's all I've got on my list.
Thank you for the work you do, Justin. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All good.
Thanks, Justin.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Randy, psych gear up.
I think the only thing I have is really is, here's our. Here's. Chris.
Sure.
There's not an extra copy of this one.
Do you need it, if you need it, I.
There's no reason I would need it.
Okay.
These are material bids of this year, asphalt materials, the only bid we had on that, accepted that, and Moab Valley on the paving, purchasing of paving products from Moab Valley, accepted that. And our tires and tubes, we accepted the pumps tire, Darzo did turn the bid in, but didn't have any notarization to it, so we rejected it. Liquid petroleum fuel, we went with Heritage this time, they're quite a little bit cheaper. Whether we get the service from them, like we did in Callup, I don't know, I'll give it a whirl.
Do they have an outlet a lot closer? I noticed they're from Evans Mill.
Yeah, they don't want to damage it, I think.
Okay. That's the only thing concerns me, in the bad weather, but.
Yeah, me too, but they said they'd be here. And on the oil and grease, deodorant was the cheapest one this time, so we went with that. Wash travel, of course, we accept all of those, sometimes somebody might be out of what we need, and go somewhere else and get it that way.
Yes.
And the same with first stone, one thing we didn't, we accept Harrystone, in the past, he's hardly ever had anything that we needed at the time, so we just had it bypassed in generally. And then the Hensons was quite a bit out of lay on the price. Culver bench materials, we didn't accept St. Regis, because they had an escalating clause in their bid, and we don't ask for that, and told them, excuse me, we need a fairly price, so we accepted the rest of them, including St. Regis. E&amp;H didn't have all the correct bid papers in there, 495 was missing, and so we didn't accept them. Repair parts, VHK was the lowest this year, so let's see if we look up on that.
Looks good.
Do you want to sign now, or do you want to back the meeting?
It don't matter, we can do it now, I don't care. However you prefer.
I'd be glad to have it.
Getting over this so we don't forget.
Want to run that motion and second? I'll do that first.
Yeah, I make a motion, we'll accept the material bids as presented to us by Randy Norman.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, aye.
Need both your signatures and Andrew needs to attest it.
Stack them on the corner there. And there.
Yeah, that's here too. S&amp;G, they have the plant, they're pitted here at Monzoo, and they also have one making part, so.
There's two spots down there. All right.
Dang, gone.
Is that right or right here?
You put your title on there.
Uh-huh.
You put your title on there.
I was like, oh, Davey said to sign my name.
She needs anything else, and she can go back up to me.
That's it.
That's all I have, unless you guys have anything for me.
I do have one question for you. I've had several questions, there are two new signs that went up on Bridgestone Road, emergency vehicle 38 ton, what is the reason, the whole theory behind that?
That's a new law they came out with, we have to put those up.
What is it, emergency, what does it have?
Fire truck, or an army truck, maybe?
They're limited to 38 ton.
Yeah.
Has no effect on anything else, armor solvent grain or anything like that, because I've had several of them call me, and I was unsure what it was for, too.
That's my understanding of it.
What dictates what roads or what bridges they go on?
I'm not sure, just what the inspectors.
The bridge inspectors?
Yeah.
Because I noticed between them signs, there's a new bridge, and then there's two old ones. Little raccoon crosses three times, I think, right through that area. So what all roads, will those be on any roads that?
They just give me a list of bridges.
That they need to be on?
That they had to be on.
Okay. And are they all 38 ton?
No, there are differences.
They're all different?
Differences, yeah.
Okay. But it only pertains to emergency vehicles?
Yeah.
Okay. Not sure why, but it does answer, I can at least answer their questions, because they was concerned about hauling grain.
Yeah, I think it's just a way to cost us more money.
Well, I'm sure of that.
Because the signs are pretty expensive.
Yep. I have seen the ones where it has different amounts of axles, different weight limits for, so.
Yeah, that, we could put that up on all of them, but that's expensive.
That much more, yeah, if we're not forced to, there's no reason to.
The reason we done that one with Farndale Roads, when we moved it down with just a lower weight limit, a lot of semis put, they always, whatever that place is up there, on 1,000. And of course, we shut 720 off, and most of the 1,000 from trucks, so that's their truck route, now we made that the truck route. And then they come up after we made the truck route.
And we had to put those signs up?
Yeah, the semis was overloaded, or they overloaded the bridge, so that's the way you got around that, these axle weights on there, so.
In a short span, it don't hurt anyway, those real short spans, you can't get a whole semi on it anyway, yeah.
No, semi, you don't get it on any.
Okay, I was just, like I say, I've had several people ask me who that affected and who it didn't, and I guess I'm still puzzled by it, why they're limiting emergency vehicles and not regular traffic, for some emergency.
I think it's so, they're going to allow heavier emergency vehicles to go over that bridge, I think.
So should there have been a weight limit on there less than that for?
They don't say so, so.
That's odd.
Yeah.
I mean, because basically, we're allowing the general public to haul 40 ton over it, and only 38 ton for emergency vehicles, so it didn't make sense to me, and it didn't, so I really didn't have a good answer for it.
A lot of the tree may be on county axles, I mean, the length.
Yeah, all right.
The vehicle, I don't know.
I may touch base with them guys the next time I talk to them, and see if they can give me more of a straight answer. Well, I think, do you have anything for him, Bruce?
Nope.
For Randy? Have a good week, hopefully, hopefully we'll keep dodging the snow.
Yeah, I hope so.
Yeah, but we're getting, we're already getting the thaw out, I was on.
I'm thawed out today.
I was on Putnam Road today, and can't believe how soft it was.
But hopefully we can use some of that.
It was 40 degrees today, and it freezes at night, and then we get 40 degree, and it's going to be that way all week, it's going to be like 25 at night, 38 in the day.
Keep it all the more.
And it's all soupy already.
I guess I.
And here we are in January, supposed to be frozen, stay frozen.
I'd still rather see us save the snow and salt money, and end up buying a little extra Duraburn and putting on the road, so.
Right.
And that, that freezing thaw is going to happen no matter what, so, less snow we have to move, the better off we are.
That's true, keep the moisture away from it.
Well, have a good week, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
Jason Fraser texted, I didn't catch this, but he wanted to know if you guys had addressed the clothing allowance checks for the sheriff's department?
They are going out tomorrow.
Okay, I was going to say, there wasn't nothing on the.
Yeah. Kyla got her claims turned in, the checks are ready to go, as soon as they approve claims here tonight, they're going out tomorrow.
All right, I texted back, let me know that.
No. I do have one question for you. I've had several questions, there are two new signs that went up on Bridgestone Road, emergency vehicle thirty-eight ton. What, what is the reason, the whole theory behind that?
That's a new law they've came out with, we have to put those up.
What is it, emergency, what does it have?
Fire truck, or an army truck, maybe?
They're limited to thirty-eight ton.
Yeah.
Has no effect on anything else, farmer solving grain or anything like that? Because I've had several of them call me, and I was unsure what it was for, too.
That's my understanding of it.
What dictates what roads or what bridges they go on?
I'm not sure, that's what the inspectors.
The bridge inspectors?
Yeah.
Because I noticed between them signs, there's a new bridge, and then there's two old ones. Little raccoon crosses three times, I think, right through that area. So what old roads, will those be on any roads that?
They just gave me a list of bridges.
That they need to be on?
That they had to be on.
Okay. And are they all thirty-eight ton?
Uh, no, there are differences.
They're all different?
Some differences, yeah.
Okay. But it only pertains to emergency vehicles?
Yeah.
Okay. Not sure why, but it does answer, I can at least answer their questions, because they was concerned about hauling grain.
Yeah, I think it's just way to cost us more money.
Well, I'm sure of that.
Because the signs are pretty expensive.
Yep. I have seen the ones where it has different amounts of axles, different weight limits for, so.
Yeah, that, we could put that up on all of them, but that's expensive sign.
That much more, yeah, if we're not forced to, there's no reason to.
The reason we done that one with Burndale Roads, when we downed, moved it down with just a lower weight limit, a lot of semis bought, because they always, whatever that place is up there, on a thousand. And of course, we shut seven-twenty off, and most of a thousand for trucks, so that's their truck route now, we made that the truck route. And then it come up after we made the truck route.
And we had to put those signs up.
Yeah, the semis was overloaded, or overloaded the bridge, so that's the way you got around that, these, got the axle weights on there, so.
At a short span, it don't hurt anyway, if, if those real short spans, you can't get a whole semi on a day anyway, yeah.
If you don't do it all, yeah.
Okay, I was just, like I say, I've had several people ask me who that affected and who it didn't, and I guess I'm still puzzled by it, why they're limiting emergency vehicles and not regular traffic, I mean, for some emergency.
I think it's, so, they're gonna allow heavier emergency vehicles to go over that bridge, I think.
So should there have been a weight limit on there less than that for?
They're, don't say so, so.
That's odd. I mean, because basically, we're allowing the general public to haul forty-ton over it, and only thirty-eight ton for emergency vehicles, so it's, it didn't make sense to me, and it didn't, so I really didn't have a good answer for it.
A lot of the tree may be on county axle, I mean, the length.
Yeah. All right.
The vehicle, I don't know.
I may touch base with them guys the next time I talk to them, and see if they can give me more of a straight answer. Well, I think, do you have anything for him, Bruce?
Nope.
For Randy? Have a good week, hopefully, hopefully we'll keep dodging the snow.
Yeah, I hope so.
Yeah, but we're getting, we're already getting the thaw out, I was on, I was on Putnam Road today, and can't believe how soft it was.
But hopefully we can use some of that.
Forty degrees today, and everything, it freezes at night, and then we get forty degree, and it's going to be that way all week, it's going to be like twenty-five at night, thirty-eight in the day, and.
Keep it all the more.
And it's all soupy already.
I guess I'd.
And here we are in January, it's supposed to be frozen, stay frozen.
I'd still rather see us save the snow and salt money and end up buying a little extra Duraburn and putting on the road, so. And that, that freezing thaw is going to happen no matter what, so, less snow we have to move, the better off we are.
That's true, keep the marshal away from it.
Well, have a good week, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
Jason Frazier texted, I didn't catch this, but he wanted to know if you guys had addressed the clothing allowance checks for the sheriff's department?
They are going out tomorrow.
Okay, I was gonna say, there wasn't nothing on the.
Yeah. Kyla got her claims turned in, the checks are ready to go, as soon as they approve claims here tonight, they're going out tomorrow.
All right, I texted them back, let me know that.
Tell him it's warm enough, he can wear shorts.
Probably has to do with sizes.
Did you have something?
Did you have a key to lock the building, I think?
Yep. We're getting ready to bail anyway. Any comments?
No, things are going well.
I'll make a motion. All right, I'll make a motion, we adjourn. Well, we're out of here.